We got thirty seconds. Don't worry about it. I can just gavel it to.
You used the bottle?
Very roll. Oh, you do have it. Okay, all right. I'll get by. Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting Middletown City Council order. Please stand and join me in moment meditation and the pledge of this flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Mulligan.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here. All right, first our agenda this evening, we have our city manager reports. Ms. Cohen, you're subbing for Mr.
I am going to do my best to improvise tonight, Your Honor. Mr. Atkins is still feeling under the weather. I only have one matter I wanted to bring to your attention. I would ask Benjamin Yoder to step to the podium, please. One of the items you have for consideration this evening is the potential engagement of Frost Brown Todd and particularly Ben Yoder here for services of law director for the city. With Sarah Fox's resignation from employment, we looked at what we could do to handle those civil legal matters. And looking at the ease and the expertise of Mr. Yoder, we're bringing before you tonight a request to enter into contract with Frost Brown Todd and Mr. Yoder to provide those services to the city. He will be working with me and the other legal staff to address what Sarah Fox was dealing with. So your civil legal matters, and some of the zoning concerns, general contract review, and working with us on other matters as necessary. Had a chance to meet with Ben a couple of times. We met with some other parties. Believe Ben is the best choice. He is a two thousand seven graduate of the University of Dayton School of Law and has some specialty in civil representation of municipalities, working with Deerfield Township and Hamilton Township, I believe it is.
Correct.
And has some expertise in zoning and economic development matters that I think would be very helpful for the city. So he's here tonight to say hello and if you have any questions for him.
Well, good evening, Mr. Yoder. Thanks for coming down this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Looking forward to working with you.
You as well. Happy to give you as much or as little info as you want. Obviously, you guys haven't approved anything, so I'm not on the clock yet, so I can talk as long as you want.
And keep you have a get some free advice.
Absolutely. But happy to give you as much background on our firm, myself, or as little as you may want.
What have we done historically? Have we worked with, I know we've worked with Frost Brown Todd kind of in various ways. So going forward, how does that play out? Like, is it the firm or is it an individual with whom we're contacted?
It's both. You know, your charter and your codified ordinances spell out that you do have a law director and that person, amongst some other roles, helps out with the civil stuff. So I personally will be fulfilling that role. But with that, you know, Frost Brown Todd, there's about five hundred of us, fifty of us or so, do government services, practice work. We serve as the law director for over a dozen, probably, different political subdivisions in southwest Ohio. Like, I'm the law director for Deerfield, Hamilton Township in Warren County. But with me, I do a ton of zoning and land use work, some other stuff as well. But that brings along with me all of our specialists that do economic development work, bond work, labor work, to hopefully ease Susan's work in some of those different areas as well. So, yes, I would be the law director. But what you're really frankly buying is the services of a full-service, large, sophisticated law firm. That's what will come to the table with me.
So the contract spells out exactly what work Ben will be taking care of. And then we have some additional options if we would choose to engage Frost Brown Todd in additional work that otherwise would be outside the scope of that contract. So we've discussed kind of what he would be handling generally. And then if we need to contract more with Frost Brown Todd, that's written into the contract.
And I know that you guys have done some pro bono stuff, so is that over?
No.
I'm just asking. I know that you guys have done some free trainings and things like that, so.
Yeah, Frost Brown Todd, government service related and otherwise, we do all sorts of free trainings for all of our clients. We do, for instance, Don Crane has put on a labor seminar at our downtown office. Everyone pays for it afterwards, but then we'll go to the Reds game as well. Those things still come with it. We do all sorts of webinars, all sorts of publications, things of that nature. Just because you're a paying client doesn't mean we will no longer care about you in that regard. So, yes, of course, we'll continue to provide all those services.
And since our contract is with the firm, I assume if you moved on to greener pastures somewhere, there would be someone to step in and fill your shoes.
Yeah. And that's one of the important reasons of why to do it, is you kind of get an institutional approach to a client, such that, you know, when I'm no longer here, one way or another, there's ten people behind me that all know your business, all know where all the bodies are buried, those different things, and help jump in to do whatever.
To address some of those concerns, too, the contract also does have a thirty-day provision to terminate. So if we would get to the point where Ben moves on to a wonderful new job, and we decide we're not, whatever happens, we do have a thirty-day termination clause.
Anything else from council?
Did we put a hard stop on the number? I know we talked about it loosely in executive session, but I didn't know if the contract itself has a ceiling.
The contract has a ceiling, and then the ability to contract for additional services at the sole discretion of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Yoder.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Cohen?
That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have a couple of guests that join us this evening. I'd like to invite Warren County Sheriff Larry Sims. Good evening, Sheriff. Thanks for coming down this evening.
I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come out each year. Can be more often if you have further questions of me for whatever reason. You have received our typical, hate to say it that way, typical year-end report. Kind of details the services and statistics that are collected throughout the year. The front page always has a few things that we kind of noted up front that tend to be a little bit different than the norm, one of which is a school resource officer that we added an additional one at King School District. And King School District, if you're not aware, is the school district that we have primary law enforcement responsibility for. The other districts in our county have their, you know, respective law enforcement agencies, with the exception of a building or two here or there that falls out into our jurisdiction. And over this school year, within last fall, we added a second school resource officer to cover some elementary school buildings there on Columbia Road in our county. We've had a school resource officer for about eleven years now at the high school, junior high campus. And the township which we service, this happens to be in Deerfield Township, which we have a service contract with. And they proposed and the township approved the additional school resource officer. And of course, I don't have to say anything to you about what those kind of scary things are that can happen in communities. And Butler County certainly had an incident similar to that, and we hope and pray those things don't happen again. And if nothing else, we hope that these types of things will minimize that risk. We all know there's no guarantees, but we hope that that will minimize the risk of something like that occurring. The other thing that I noted in there was canines. We had two canines that retired over a year ago, were agents or, we've since been able to obtain their replacements and their handlers, have their canines with them, and they're officially out and about now doing what they do. Great resource, I'm sure many of you know. And the only other thing noted in there is we've been going on about three and a half years trying to get established this countywide records management dispatch software program. I think we're actually close now. I say that just kind of keep my fingers crossed. But hopefully later on this year, we'll be able to connect everybody in our county with those, be able to look, you know, jail records, warrants, et cetera, which has been a long time coming. The other thing I would, if you're okay with that, just spend a couple minutes talking about our jail project. And that project is set to break ground on July fifteenth of this year. And it's about a twenty-two month project before we get in it. So spring of twenty-one, yeah. They will also have to move a road in the complex. I have a couple renderings that I'll share just to maybe orient you a little bit with that. Our capacity is at two eighty now. The capacity will go to four sixty-eight is a minimum. The commissioners will have an opportunity to bump those numbers up when the architect brings the final drawing to them. Bump out a wall here, there, that will add, you know, upwards to five hundred plus beds with, I say minimal costs, nothing's minimal, but it would be at today's cost for beds versus fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now when they have to add on. So they'll have that opportunity to review that. And then if I could just humor you and share you at least one drawing, I apologize, my backseat. I promise of swinging around here in a minute. But if you're familiar with the complex at all, that is our common police port building. Our jail sits down this road, which is Memorial. This is Justice Drive. It goes right directly through the center of our complex. This is a school here, one of the loving schools. In order to make room for this facility, they are going to eventually close this road, Justice Drive, as it stands now, right here at the parking lots. It will remain open for parking section. And then they will actually recreate this road that swings actually right along these pine trees at this school and reconnects down here at Cook Road. You can see, if I look at this, this building is going to be a rather large facility. The dark red or deep red, whatever color you want to call that, is the new jail sheriff's office. Sheriff's office on, I guess it'd be my right, and then you can see the housing units here that would be what they would build immediately. The land therefore allows these additional housing units when that time arrives without building a new facility. Each one of those blue little pods would give you an additional one hundred and fifty beds. So, you know, somewhere down the road, you would have over a thousand beds in the facility when that time would arrive. So at least they're making some use of what that growth would look like. And fortunately, the land, which is already owned by the county, will allow for that, too. The other thing, they have a little bit more of an attractive rendering that they had shared with, oh, sorry. The red is what is going to be the new jail. The blue represents what future growth will be. And they're moving the road, swings down this way, allowing this land to be used. And then last thing. Is what the facility will look like. You can see the taller portions of that building are, would be the jail or housing units. Greatly appreciate coming over, at least to see everyone. And we appreciate the relationship. As you know, we have a great relationship with your chief and your police agency, and that's what makes things work. We all know we can't do it by ourselves, and we are very, very fortunate in the area we work and live in to be able to have those kind of relationships. So we appreciate that very much.
Thanks for coming down, Sheriff. Always good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Carolyn Tepe from the US Census Bureau down for a visit. Good evening.
Thank you. Makes that help. I have it on the book just to.
Let me know. I'll be happy to blow it.
Oh, thank you. So I'm here today before you to talk about the census. We are three hundred and fifty days away from the actual census day in two thousand and twenty. And again, my name is Carolyn Tepe. I'm a partnership specialist for the US Census, and my region to cover is Butler, Warren, Preble, and Dark County. So I will be working with all of the city and townships and municipalities in that area. In front of you, I had a folder. I'm not really going to be going through that. It's additional information for you to look at. There's no way I can cover everything that has to do with the census in ten minutes. But it gives you some hot topic issues to look at. And some of those things may come up, and I'll say that there's something in there, but you don't have to, like, look at it now. So just so you're aware. My presentation should be about ten minutes. And it starts with shaping our future starts here, which is the logo or slogan you'll hear throughout the next year. And so, why are we here? So we're going to talk a little bit about a brief history of the census. It started in seventeen ninety. It was led by the Secretary of State then, which was Thomas Jefferson. The first census took about nine months to complete and was done on horseback, if anyone needs to know that or guess that. It was a count of about three point nine million people. We count on the census, a decennial census, so it's every ten years, and it's always on the zero. Our census results, including those from the American Community Survey, that is done every year randomly throughout the United States, which is what we used to know as the long form, for those of us that remember getting that version. It directly affects how federal funding is allocated to the state, local, and tribal governments throughout the United States. And that's probably the most important sentence in my entire presentation. So, next, the decennial census purpose is to conduct a census of the population, housing, and disseminate those results to the President of the United States and the American people. The uses of the census data is for appropriation. It's for drawing congressional and state and legislative districts, as well as school districts and voting precincts. It's used for enforcing voting rights and civil rights, distributing federal dollars, as I talked about earlier, and informing planning decisions at the federal, state, and local government level. It's also used to inform organizational decisions that are business-related, such as grocery stores and other community housing, and lots of other nonprofit activities also. Just so you're aware, we give the President that information on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, and we release the data to the general public for redrawing of boundaries on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Next, you cannot read this. And I know you cannot read this, but it's a required slide for me. Basically, it says all the way that census data is used. And actually, in your packet, you'll find another informational piece that kind of tells you a little bit more. But to tell you, the Department of Transportation, services for individuals with disabilities, the school lunch program, Head Start, early Head Start, childcare, Pell Grants, public transportation, substance abuse and treatment, CBD dollars. So those are just some of the things. Thanks. This is a map of the United States. In two thousand and ten, these were the congressional seats. So if you have a state in orange, like Ohio, they lost seats. In dark blue, those are ones that gained seats. We do not, we're not losing population. So we lost two seats in two thousand and ten, if you're not aware of that. We're not anticipating that Ohio will lose seats, but our population is not growing at the rate that everybody, that some other states are. So there is the potential that we could lose a seat in Ohio, which would really affect our congressional districts. The next one, the two thousand and twenty census goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. It's to be conducted at the same high quality that we did in two thousand and ten. However, we have some changes coming. We will be maximizing outreach through traditional media methods like TV and radio, like we've always done, but we'll also be searching into new media outlets such as Facebook, Twitter, and I have a whole entire list at the end of presentation. We'll even be using Snapchat, for those of you who have teenagers and know about that. We'll be offering and encouraging people to secure their online response options. We'll be providing field workers with handheld devices to collect census data, so there won't be this big paper management, which is massively going to reduce our expenses, because in the past, we had to store that paper and secure facilities. So now, what you're going to see next, on the next slide, oh, nope, I'm sorry. No, no, go ahead. You can stay there. Thank you, though. You'll see it in a minute. But we don't have to have as many locations for our census offices either. So we started our census activities mostly, well, we started the minute that two thousand and ten ended. But most activities started establishing where to count. We started doing LUCA, which some of your planning people will be aware of, in two thousand and eighteen and just recently. Now we're in this phase where we're starting to motivate people to respond, and that's why I'm here with you today. And then we will count the population, and then we'll release those dates. This is like my big-picture slide, so, next. This is where our regional offices are located. We are currently in the Philadelphia region, next slide. And then this is Ohio. Ohio will have, I always forget this number, and I hate to count, eight locations. We currently have our office open in Columbus. We will be opening the other locations in late summer of this year, two thousand and nineteen. And we are, with Butler County, we are in the Dayton region. And so our main office will be there. And one of the things I want to highlight, some people have been upset, because, you know, they had an office before, and they're not having an office this time. It's because of paper. That's the main reason. We don't have to store as much paper, and we don't have to have our enumerators running to an office to drop those papers off. It's all digital now. So it's going to be uploaded and encrypted immediately, so there will be more security with it. Next slide. I feel so bossy telling you that. Our pay rates. We are currently hiring. Anyone is welcome to go to two thousand and twenty census slash jobs and apply for jobs online. The application process takes about thirty minutes. We have very good, high-paying jobs. In this region, we start at around fourteen, and we go as high as thirty-two for the Dayton area. This is just an overview of our timeline again. We will start in-field address canvassing in August of this summer, two thousand and nineteen. It'll continue through October. That's going out and confirming that structures are where we think they are. Then we'll do some group quarter counting in February of two thousand and twenty, and that would be your colleges and other institutions where people live in groups. Census Day is officially April first. However, people will be invited to respond in mid-March, and they can actually start responding on March twenty-third through the Internet. And then we will go through our Internet self-response phase, and then we will move into a non-response follow-up phase, where we'll have enumerators out into the community. On the next slide. So why am I here? Because we are asking local governments to collaborate with the census. We need space to have meetings, to do onboarding and training, if you have that available, lists of residential institutions, if you have not yet provided those, shelters, service providers, and transient locations. Those will be provided to our group quarter division. We also are asking an assistance in helping to promote temporary job opportunities, which I spoke about a moment ago. We also are asking to each of the cities and to form what we're calling a complete count committee. In two thousand and ten, some cities did this, and we found the response rate was far greater. And so the census has decided to hire more people like me, to help more people like you, to make sure that people are counted. Next. A complete count committee is a volunteer committee established at the local level by community leaders to increase awareness about the census and motivate residents to respond. Next. Why form a complete count committee? Again, it increases the response rates. It says mailing, but we're hoping it's going to be Internet response, because it's a lot more cost-effective and saves taxpayers' money. Utilizing the local knowledge and expertise, so we're not going out and recreating systems you guys already have in place, and bringing together a cross-section of community members whose focus is on two thousand and twenty awareness. Next. You guys speak the language of your community. You know your community. You know what motivates them to respond. You gain valuable knowledge from the census process, and you develop a plan to impart that knowledge to your community. It also increases participation ratios and response rates for continuing the awareness of the two thousand and twenty census. One of the things that actually happened to me today is it's also, you are a person that's going to get to know about the latest and greatest and newest things that are going on with the census. And as of today, and it's the last page, I think, in your packet, they have released the data dissemination and training program. We are using a new data dissemination program that's being launched right now, and you'll be able to receive training through this. And so that's an important thing for your economic development people. The complete count committee, again, this is just like a short overview of what I've said. It's determined by each city. I want to express that. In addition to that you determine who is on that committee. And the idea is to reduce the failure of count of residents, who could result in substantial loss of revenue for your next decade. In your packet, you'll find, you can go to the next slide, in your packet, you'll find a study that was done by the George Washington Policy Institute. And in that institute, they did each state, and they determined that Ohio, for every residence that is not counted, you are giving up one thousand eight hundred dollar, I mean, sorry, one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars per year, times ten years of lost revenue that would come in through programming. And that's with only the top sixteen funded federal programs. If you move up, and that's about, in Ohio, that comes to one, sorry, twenty-one billion dollars. If you go up to the next fifty-five, it goes up to thirty-three billion dollars. So these are just some suggested members that would be on this council. It would be your head's mayor, whoever they want to chair, head of the community organizations, faith-based organizations, university or college representatives. The next slide shows some other members. It would be faith-based organizations, group quarters, homeless, immigrants, veterans, special housing, senior citizens. Next slide. When should we start? We should start now. We're asking for you to prepare to participate, put line items in your budget, to establish a complete count committee. We're asking you to coordinate with overlapping governments and city councils, such as the county. I speak with the county on May sixth about theirs. I want to stress that this isn't overlapping. It's more of a coordination. I think the best way to explain it is the county has county roads that they're trying to make sure that they get funding for when people are counted. But once those county roads stop, city roads start up. And that's the same way with all services. We are asking that you identify a point of contact, and you schedule and invite me to come in for your first planning meeting. Next slide. And this is how you can reach us at our federal office, at the regional office in Philadelphia. Next slide. These are all the ways you can connect with us: Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Instagram, and Pinterest, and our website. And any questions?
Questions for council from Ms. Tepe? We have had had some preliminary discussions on forming our complete count committee, so we're thinking about that.
Okay. And if I can help in any way or answer any questions down the road, please, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. One thing I want to stress, the idea of a complete count committee, yes, we want you to form a committee, but we don't want it to be more work. We want you to put lots of people on that committee to help you. We're not asking it for a just city-only project. And we're also hoping that you integrate it into existing systems, so it's not a duplication of service, and it's more of a coordination of services and pushing through existing services that you have.
Certainly, partner, do make sure we get the word out through our utility bill and things like that.
Trust me. I need your help in this area. Thank you for letting me talk.
I do have one question on the application, I guess. Is there mobile access available, too? Because I know with the proliferation of smartphones, is that part of the census process?
Yes, there will be. Yeah, that'll be part of the Internet response. You should be able to do it on your phone, yes.
Very good. I'll make it very easy, so.
Yep, it will. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. All right. And with that, brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration, this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from April second, two thousand and nineteen, to receive and file board and commission minutes from the Board of Zoning Appeals from June the sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning Commission from November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and January ninth, two thousand and nineteen, the Cemetery Board of January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Historic Commission from January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, the Park Board from February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and the Civil Service Commission from February the twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, to receive and file oaths of office for Daryl Barnett and Joshua Meisner, to confirm the appointment of Taylor Mann to the position of dispatcher, Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, to receive and file a performance bond submitted by Grand Communities LLC, guaranteeing public improvements construction as part of Renaissance Two, Section One, and to proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, as Arbor Day.
Okay, thank you. Are there motion for the issues and actions listed on the consent agenda? Still moved. Second. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right, we have three motion items this evening.
To authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Brown &amp; Caldwell for owner's advisor services associated with the Relate Side redirection project.
Ms. Cohen?
This is part of the long-term control plan, Your Honor. This would allow us to enter into a design contract with the company, Brown &amp; Caldwell, to assist in the design and build of a new sewer and pump station to promote flow to the hydraulic channel.
Okay. Now, we have a staff report on this. Any questions for Ms. Cohen this evening? Okay, no motion to approve. Still moved. Second. Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Second item is to authorize a city manager to enter into a Second item is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Smith Corp. Incorporated to proceed with the Roosevelt Boulevard 84-inch storm sewer lining project.
Ms. Cohen?
It seems Public Works has been active these days. This is for regards to some sewer repairs and improvements on Roosevelt Boulevard. We'll take the existing 84-inch storm culvert and construct new walls on each. It was determined that was appropriate and less expensive than trying to replace it in kind. About $257,000. It was lower than the engineer's estimate, as well as 8% lower than the next highest bidder.
This is where we had a bit of a issue earlier this spring, didn't we, out in that area on Roosevelt, I think?
I think, you might be thinking of the next matter, which is the Interceptor Sewer.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Cohen? Okay, I want to turn the motion to approve. Still moved?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
To authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated to prepare construction plans and specifications for the bridge deck replacement for the University Boulevard Bridge between State Route 122 and 14th Avenue.
Okay, Ms. Cohen?
I believe we've all been aware, there's been some structural concerns about the bridge over on University, 122 and 14th. It needs to be replaced to protect the safety of the citizens. And this will allow us to enter into a construction plan and design contract for $142,000 to start that process to get it repaired. Funds are appropriated in 2019, but...
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Cohen? All right. I want to turn the motion to approve. Still moved?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That concludes our motion agenda. Move to Council comments. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I express thanks to the Middletown Historical Society. I, along with other council members, attended the re-grand opening of the Canal Museum last Sunday and the rededication of the Miami Canal Historical Marker. It is open for business, so I remind residents that they can visit it on Sunday afternoons from April till October, and there's really some interesting historical items and artwork in the Canal Museum, so take advantage of that. And then, second, earlier this week, Ms. Cohen and I attended the quarterly meeting of the Butler County Land Bank, and I'm pleased, and I am pleased to report that Middletown has, with the use of federal funds, demolished or has in process the demolition of about 85 vacant and blighted properties in Middletown, so this continues to be a useful tool for us to stabilize and improve neighborhoods in various areas of the city. And then, finally, I wish all staff and residents a very blessed and happy Passover and Easter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
Nothing this evening, sir.
All right, Ms. Vettori?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Mayor Moon?
Nothing this evening.
All right. I'll just mention a couple other things. Attended the Suncoke Community Advisory Panel Meeting last evening, and they had a couple things to relay. They've, they had a couple bypassing events that were unexpected, but those are within their control hours. We had an update from the Southwest Ohio Air Monitoring Service, and unfortunately, with a three-year monitoring period, we've been in compliance with all the limits there, so that shows some encouragement as well. On May 11, we have the Keep Middletown Beautiful cleanup coming up, so I'd ask people to plan for that. That'll be organized out of the high school, and Jeff Michelle at Keep Middletown Beautiful, I think, has some information on the city website for sign up. They encourage folks to sign up early for participation on that. And also on, I think it's the 11th, the annual meeting for the Middletown Historical Society is coming up. They'll be featuring some tidbits from our industrial past, and that should be very interesting to see as well. And then, the end of this month, I believe on the 20, let me look back here, 25th, if I'm right, the NWAACP Annual Scholarship Bank will be, will be held at Central Connections, and that's always a nice event where they recognize the Louis Cox Scholarship winner and a number of different participants from our middle schools and grade schools on a number of different projects that they do throughout, throughout the year. And lastly, that weekend too, last weekend in April, there'll be a number of events, two events at Sorgh Opera. Good to see them back up and running. All some great events. So congratulate everybody on the hard work that goes into that. A lot of volunteers put a lot of time and effort into pulling those together, and certainly appreciate the work they do to support those good things in Middletown. And with that, we can move on to our legislation this evening. Ms. Cohen?
Out of the six items this evening, we do have four that we are asking to consider as an emergency. As part of proceeding, I ask for a motion to waive charter requirements for two readings and 30 days to enactment regarding ordinance O.2019-21, our, Resolution R.2019-14, Resolution R.2019-15, and Ordinance O.2019-22.
I move to waive the charter provision requiring readings on two separate days and to declare the previously read resolutions and ordinances an emergency measure and read one time only.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
First matter this evening is Ordinance O.2019-19, an ordinance adopting a policy for the honorary designation of public right-of-way and public facilities. This is a second reading and available for your action this evening.
Any other motion to adopt?
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? And I've got a presentation on this before, and had a work session over it. With that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Next matter is Ordinance Number O.2019-20, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to a contract with National Water Services LLC for additional well-drilling services. This is also a second reading and ready for action this evening.
Okay, any other motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion or second, any discussion or comments? Presentation on this before. Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Next matter is Ordinance O.2019-21, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Howell Contractors Incorporated for the repair of the East Middletown Interceptor Sewer and declaring an emergency.
Any other motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second. Ms. Cohen?
This is, you'll see this fairly often, I believe. About once a year, we have an issue with the sewer in that area. We've had another collapse in March 31 of this year. It's upstream from the section of pipe that we replaced last year. We're anticipating having to replace 50 to 150 feet of piping. Replacing this pipe does count towards the requirements for the consent decree with the EPA. Asking to approve that as an emergency matter, because while there is some flow now, a full collapse would cause worse problem.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Have we got a email and update on this? Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori. Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Number four is Resolution R.2019-14, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency. This is regarding the Town Mall TIF fund.
Any other motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cohen?
This allows us to take released funds from Warren County and release them to the school and reimburse the Town Mall folks for infrastructure improvements. This person went to the TIF contract, so we're simply acting as a pass-through for that previous contract.
I don't know. We had an update on this. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Number five is Resolution R.2019-15, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency. This is regarding matters in the general fund.
Okay, any other motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cohen?
Since we have passed budgets at the end of last year, there's been two major changes in the Law Department, both regarding personnel. The first was, previously, we have had a contract for our victim advocate services with a group out of Hamilton. Right at the end of the year, they informed us they were no longer going to be doing in courtroom advocacy, which we need for the amount of cases that pass through the court. In order to address those concerns and the new Marcy's law requirements, we hired two part-time victim advocates so that they can fill in for each other, and it was the most cost-effective approach. That did require us to make some movement between our professional services for the contract to the salary lines. And then, with the resignation of Ms. Fox, we have another issue about trying to reallocate her funds from our services lines to what would be our legal services to assist in paying the contract for Frost Brown Todd. Those two changes, unfortunately, were not budget-neutral, required about $58,000 of additional funds. In order to help ease this, we have worked with Finance Director Burton to deappropriate $40,000 of funds from other salary lines where we were overbudgeted to try and make up for some of the difference. And then, we are asking for an additional appropriation of about $10,000 to make this work.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Cohen? Yeah. We got a motion on that one, yes. Okay. So, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Last matter is Ordinance O.2019-22, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an agreement with Frost Brown Todd LLC for law director services and declaring an emergency.
Okay, any other motion to adopt?
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? This is a subject of Mr. Yoder's earlier presentation and the update. Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right. Our last time this evening is in executive session, so I need a motion under the authority of Ohio Revise Code 121.22G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and also under the authority of Ohio Revise Code 121.22G4, preparing for conducting and reviewing negotiations, bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms, conditions of their employment. Still moved?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right. Our final executive session will just be recessing to our first meeting in May, May 7, in these chambers at 5:30. Thank you all. Have a good evening.